I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, who are you? You have the meeting commencing from September 1st, 2022. Could you view them at this time? Do you have any corrections or changes that you would like to make to the minutes? There are none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes they have presented.
So much.
Second.
And a question, comments, discussion about the minutes. Ms. Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Okay, up next, as you know, our Lieutenant, Hobie Jones, is retiring on October 1st. We're sad to see, we're sad to see him go. He served the village very well for the last 21 years. He's a, he's been a rock in the department as well. I feel like I'm repeating this speech, but, but last week, we gave, our last meeting, we gave a very similar speech, and two men that have retired were big forces in our department, and we're going to miss them. But we wish you well in your new endeavors, and we're sad to see you go, but Hampshire should always be at home.
Always a second.
So at this time, I'd like to present, we'll be with a service award, rewarding this service for the village. And seriously, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. My honor.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, you want me to take this one? Okay. Up next, we have a few appointments tonight. As you know, our Police Chief, who didn't get the memo that he doesn't have to come to these things anymore. He's still here, just retired, but we have Mr. Doug Pan in front of us tonight. Mr. Pan, would you step up to the podium, please? It's my intent to recommend to the Village Board appointment as interim Chief of Police, but it's normally at this time where the Village Board has asked any questions they have of the potential appointee. You guys have learned a little bit about him through his resume and heard, you know, through our process and how we, how we got here. But I'd also like to give you guys all an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Pan, so brace yourself, I suppose.
Let's start it off. Just curious as to coming from a bigger city to Hampshire, what are some of your expectations here?
Um, well, I, this has been a goal of mine for a long time, was to, was to go from, from the bigger city and, and, you know, move on to a smaller department in, in these years of my life, and I was, I was contacted by the Illinois Chiefs to, to apply for this, and, and I was excited right away. It's within driving distance of where I live right now. And I, after I met Mike and Jay, I just felt like it was a great fit, and so I'm excited to come in. And I was Assistant Deputy Chief for eight years of my career in Rockford, and I've always wanted the opportunity to be able to, you know, put my own fingerprint on things and do, and do things the way that, the way that I've learned is best, and so that's a big reason why I'm here, so I really appreciate the opportunity.
Anyone else?
What, what's your intent after the three months?
Well, I guess we'll see how that goes. We'll see how that goes. I would, I would love the opportunity, if I have the opportunity to, to apply, I would love to have that opportunity. And, you know, I think that once, you know, once I'm, I become invested in a, in a community, and I plan on investing in your community in the next three or four months, then I, you know, I would hate to, I would hate to get to the point where, you know, I've evaluated things, and I'm, and I'm into the culture of the, of the organization and making the difference, and then, and then have to leave, so I am interested, if I'm afforded that opportunity in the future and so forth.
So, a question for you, and this is a little different because I know it's an interim role, but in your, in your first 30 days, what do you see your role being? How, how do you see your first 30 days going? Where's your focus?
Well, I already started while I was on vacation. I just came back, back from Texas, and that's my wife. While we were down there, I was, I was reviewing policies and, you know, communicating with Mike and Jay and Sergeants and Lieutenant Hobie and, and just trying to get a picture of where everything's at, and I'm going to continue to do that starting tomorrow at 6 o'clock in the morning, I'll be here. But the big thing for me right now is to, is to come into the organization and really get to know everyone, and, and I don't mean just inside the organization, but also outside in the community. So for the first 30 days, it's going to be, it's going to be taking a look at everything, see where we're at, you know, looking at sort of a snapshot of, of how the organization looks right now, and, and then building those relationships. That's going to be the biggest thing, and you know, and the most important part of that to me is you've got all the employees that already work for the organization, they, they know where we're at, you know, they know, you know, what needs to, you know, what we need to stop doing, what we need to continue doing, and, and what we need to start doing. You know, and, and so I would look to them to, to start off with for, you know, what do you think? And, and really get a good idea of where we're at from, from the people that are here, so they're the experts of, of this organization, and, and also building relationship with all of you, of course, I, you know, so when I say, you know, inside the organization and outside, I mean, you're, you're part of that village organization outside of the Police Department, but that, I mean, this will be a priority to find out what your needs are and what, and what you're looking for in, in this position also.
Anyone else have any other follow-up questions? I mean, you, you, can you tell us just a little bit about yourself, and, you know, you mentioned that you've been with the Rockford Police Department, you were Assistant Deputy, Deputy Chief for the last eight years, but you tell us kind of how you got here, if you would?
Sure, um, I, I was, I've actually been in law enforcement for, well, I just took the last year and a half off, but I was, I came into law enforcement in 1992. I was a Boone County Deputy for a year, and then I switched over to the Rockford Police Department. I worked my way up through the ranks there, was an officer, a street crimes officer, a narcotics detective, and then sergeant for about six years, and then I stepped into lieutenant, and I was only there for about a year, and then I moved to Assistant Deputy Chief. When I was originally promoted there, I was promoted to, to take this concept that they had of pilot, of geographic policing, which was to move from one central station to three, and really for two years, that was my job, was to move the organization forward in it, and which, which included everything from all the internal stuff, the external, you know, that when I say internal, I'm talking labor management issues and scheduling, and figuring out how we were going to make it all work, and resource allocation for moving into the buildings, and then, um, and then externally, it was, you know, building relationship with the community and really selling the whole idea to the community. And then once that, once that was in place, and we had our three stations under construction, then we started a district, so I was a district commander for about 65 officers within the Police Department, you know, and we did everything in, in one district for about two years, and then we finally get to move into the buildings, and, um, so that was probably the, you know, the, the most, or the most, the biggest overall project and accomplishment that I had while I was there, and then all kinds of other things. I ran the business part of the Police Department for three years after that, which, which just covered everything, you know, all, all of the business end of it, all the money, the procurement, the policies and training and recruiting and hiring, and just records, copy and evidence, all of that. I did that for about, for about three years, and then I went back as a district commander. I retired in 2021 from Rockford, really with the idea of seeking a job as a, as a chief, or, or maybe moving into the private sector. At that point, I wasn't really sure. I had a couple, I did apply for a couple places, and made it to finalists, but they, I wasn't, I wasn't selected, and then I took a job with the, what's called the Mobile Training Unit, which is, if you're not familiar with that, that's, I, let's be the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board in Springfield has set sort of, sort of satellite offices. They're, they're all independent, but there's several throughout the state, and I ran Northern Illinois Training Advisory Board, which is similar to Niemert that you're part of here, but much smaller. But, but I had Winnebago, Boone, and DeKalb Counties that I was managing law enforcement training for, not training myself, but managing law enforcement training, and I did that until March, and, and it really was just, it was too administrative for me. I was too strapped to my desk in the office, and, and I, and I was really looking for, you know, contact and building relationships, and, and there was a little bit of that, getting out to go meetings and that, but it, it just really was, it was mainly in the office, and so then I stepped out of that to then, and, and it's a, it's a big, I mean, it's a, it's, there's a lot of responsibility with the position, so I gave a three-month notice and helped them to find an ex-director and all that before I left. And then, and then I went back to, you know, to retirement and finding, you know, what, where I wanted to go from there. I do have another, I, I'm in, I'm involved in training now with a company called Wicklanders Law Skates, a part-time, part-time job really, where they, we teach interview and interrogation, and so I still have that, but that's, that's a part-time thing. It's actually kind of a hold-down for a while to kind of figure out what's happening, so. Yeah, I have, so I married, this is Jenna, my wife. We've been married about five years, and our son Tobias is, is three.
He looks thrilled to be here.
Yeah.
We usually.
We, we drove, so we left Texas yesterday morning, we left San Antonio, well, no, yesterday afternoon, and we left San Antonio at 1:00 yesterday afternoon and, and drove straight through, got back up here at about 10:30 this morning, and so Tobias is in the car for a day. Well, as it has, has I, I and my wife, so it's, it was, it was a journey. Well, here we are, three hours of sleep. I'm stepping back into law enforcement, right, so that's kind of where I'm going to get used to that, so. That's right.
So anyone else?
One final question.
Yeah.
What is your philosophy on promoting from within, and if someone isn't qualified, but they, they have the right fit for you, mentoring them to elevate them to a position?
I think it's, it's, if not the primary, it's one of the chief's primary roles, to, to, to get, to prepare people within the organization to be able to step into those, into those leadership positions. Yeah. And, and I think that for, and with that, I, I would look to, I will be looking even just in, in the next three months to, you know, take the responsibilities that, you know, with, with the lieutenant leaving and the chief leaving, there's going to be a whole lot on my plate initially, and, and I'm going to have to rely on people to help and to, you know, and to step into responsibilities and some jobs and responsibilities, tasks within the Police Department that they may or may not have done in the past, just to, just to help, but, but the, the really important part of that is doing those different responsibilities to, to develop and, and to, to move forward, and, you know, and training, as much training as, I don't, I don't know yet, I can't speak to how much training we're going to be able to do, but I, it's important to me to be able to afford to do as much of that to the officers as I can, so, yeah.
One question, you brought up, and you're at Rockford, you helped to change the organization to originally based your chair, based in part of that you brought up. Our, our officers, our lieutenant, our chief have done a phenomenal job of having respect for the community, from having people at the school speak highly about the officers, being involved in community events, just being present in the community. Where, what's your philosophy on community involvement in the police force, and where do you see that in priorities of where you would need in our organization?
It's, it's, it's one of the top priorities. You've got personnel and, and community is, is, I think, the top two priorities, and, and everything else falls under that. One of the, the biggest concepts with that whole project in Rockford was to, was to engage the community, the whole point of that, that whole transition was to engage the community, and to have what we call unity of command within the department, so, you know, so that the, the department's aligned with the community and out in the community, and then what we did is, as command staff at the Police Department, the district commander, so there's three district commanders, and their primary responsibility in the community is engagement. I, I mean, really, they, they have, you know, they have 60, 65 officers that all report to them, but their, their, their primary role was really out there engaging. Now, now, I mean, the first, you've got that, the street, and everything going on in the street is, is always, is always going to take that, you know, that priority to make sure that all those needs are always met, and everybody's prepared and equipped to do that, trained to do that. But then the next, the next thing was, was the community and engagement. And, and I could, I could talk for a long time about all the different things that we did do, and, you know, I, I'm excited to see what we can do here. You know, what we can do better, what we can do different. I am a big advocate of, of community policing not being a, a unit, and I know, you know, Hampshire doesn't have the luxury of a community policing unit, but I really think that it's, a unit can be better, because, because what happens is then it becomes their job and not everybody else's job to engage with the community, to be creative, find things to do, and if we can get everybody out there doing that, that, that's really what community policing is supposed to be. So that would, that's, I guess that's my overall philosophy and where I'm. And, and I, and I appreciate the, what you're saying, that, that they're already doing that, so it's, you know, it's not like I'm looking at it going, oh, we got to do all these changes with that part of it, just different ideas and new things, and, you know, and one thing we, they had come up is, in, in thinking is, you know, every officer has their, sort of their niche, and, and there's things that they like to do, things that they're interested in, whether it's fitness, or fishing, or, you know, hunting, or basketball, or whatever it may be. Everybody's got their, so their own little hobby and their niche, and, you know, are there ways that we can use those things to engage? You know, to have everybody have their own, you know, I, I think in Rockford, we had a, you know, a sergeant who was a big basketball guy, and so he had, he ran a basketball team, summertime, and, you know, another guy that liked to fish, and so he did cops and bobbers, you know, and, you know, when you take, you can take them to the, out there, and there's actually some programs that are national that, that you can buy into some of that stuff, but, or you can, I shouldn't bring you, but, but a lot of it was grassroots, and, because I would encourage that as much as possible.
Anyone else have any other questions? I have, I have a, I have a question. If I entertain a motion and have you appointed, can you promise that you're never going to call it Hampshire ever again? All right. So, so what is, so what is the correct way to?
Answer.
Answer.
You didn't see everyone.
As soon as you said it, everybody looked at each other like, come on. The jury is still up, whether it's pies or keys, advocate, or police, or something. You know, I'm really, I'm usually a stickler about stuff like that myself, so it's, I, I. I'm just going to give you a hard time. It's too serious in the room. All right, does, anyone else have any other questions? All right, with that, I entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Doug Pan as Chief of Police on an interim basis, commencing on this date upon the approval of the appointment of a permanent chief.
So.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Motion pass six zero.
And I have to come up here and sign your life away.
Okay, raise your right hand and read after me. I do some of the square.
I do some of the square.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
In the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of.
And will fulfill the search of duties.
The search of duties.
Of the Office of Chief of Police.
Of the Office of Chief.
Of the Village of Hampshire, Illinois.
Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I've done that for six times, I've done that in my career, I was stupid about this, and it was only the second time I guess. But you've had a case, it's up to you.
Not to me, it's Missouri. She's okay. She runs away.
It's been a two-shot.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but you had a long tunnel of days.
Hampshire, of my first office.
Thank you, guys, for all coming tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have two appointments, we have two appointments up for the BDC. As you know, we've had a couple of appointments open, positions open on the BDC for a little bit of time, but as I told the chairman for JECI, first time I said that right, normally I call you Joe C. for JECI. Takes a little while when you want to find the right people, people for your team, so I think that, I think Chairman Corjecky has done that, and so before you, I'm going to kind of lump them together, because we have Ms. Megan Rango online tonight, and then we have Ms. Elizabeth Martin here in person, so you guys have all their information in front of you, so if you'd like to ask any of the candidates, I suppose, any questions, you're more than welcome to do so, at the time, just address each individual. Or send the appointment separately. No, I.
I think they're recommended by Chairman Corjecky. I think that Marvelous' job, I think they're, they're good to go.
I'd just like to thank both of volunteering to serve. I mean, it's, it's tough to get people to volunteer, so thank you both for stepping up. As the trustee both, yes. We thoroughly vet these candidates, so.
And we'll say that there were multiple candidates, and these two candidates stood out as, as our best options here, and their resumes, I think, as you can see, speak for themselves. They're very highly qualified.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Megan Rango to the Business Development Commission with a term ending in September 2024.
So moving.
I don't, he's ready to go.
I almost said it. I still have that guy in my head. I saved for a while.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Clerk, call the role, please.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Motion pass six zero.
I'd also like to have a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Elizabeth Martin to the Business Development Commission for a term ending in March of 2024, so.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Coe, Ms. Burke, or?
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion pass six zero.
Thank you both for agreeing to serve. Welcome to the village.
Yep.
I know the chief's online, but I'd like to embarrass her just a little bit. Ms. Rango is actually the daughter of former trustee Ansel Dowski, so she's a patient of village service.
Thank you.
That's a gift.
You started me off.
All right, thank you both. You guys can, you guys are more than welcome to stay, or you could make your exit. It's up to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It was great seeing you guys. Thank you very much, and we'll be in touch. All right, thank you, guys.
Good seeing you, bye.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just briefly introduce my report today. These five items are all, none of them are connected. In the past, I've said A and B are connected, none of them are connected, but they are all very similar, and they're all actions already approved by the planning and zoning commission. So I'll say in all cases, if you have an agenda supplement before you, and Chairman Maroc is here with us tonight if you have any questions. So with that, I'll ask your consideration and ordinance granting a variance of the maximum height for an accessory building in the R2 Residential Zone District to allow for new garage greater than 15 feet nine and three eighteen D checks. Questions, so I can briefly?
Sure.
The petitioners are with us tonight, they're online, but essentially they have two small structures at their house right now, at their property, and a gravel parking area, and they'd like to upgrade that a bit to a, a nice new garage and a paved parking area, and they're, you know, they can obviously speak for themselves, but I'll just note that their complaint is, is that there's not enough storage. They're very old houses, built in the 1800s, and it has, I think she said, three closets, so it's, there's no storage in their house, and so they would like to be able to fill a lot of space, and that's why they would like a taller garage. So the planning and zoning commission, they consider this on Monday, actually, and the, what was five to zero is a recommended approval.
Does anyone have any questions about the supplemental project or for the petitioners?
Yes, is the, the garage is going to be off of the, I guess you could call it the driveway on Madison Street?
Correct, on the northern end of the, okay. The only question I have. Any other questions, Jess?
Just one, is, just to see if the, I know there were no neighbors or anybody that came to the, the commission meeting, but have you heard of any issues, or your neighbors talked to you, or have you talked to the neighbors about it?
Hi, this is Lisa from Mahanigan. We have actually spoken to all of our, like, immediate neighbors about putting in the garage, and none of them have had any concerns. I feel like we have good relationships with them, and they all know that we have an older house without a lot of storage, so they were in support, especially the ones that, like, are directly, you know, based into our property. They both were fine with the addition of the garage.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Rock, anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time, no. Research board.
With that, I'll entertain a mo- a motion approving ordinance 20 dash, or, yeah, 20, 22 dash 20. That'll be enough. Okay, here, move in second, if you agree. Questions, comments?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Here, first, and then Toby second.
Toby second.
Comments, concerns?
Just one quick one, just, I'm, I'm assuming you're going to start this right away. One of the terms is that it's got to be done within six months of the day of the passage, and I'm assuming you're going to want that in the process, or no, correct?
Oh, yes. Mr. Ray and I have already chatted about what the next steps are, so that we can hopefully get started as soon as possible, and we appreciate you approving this for our family.
Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Okay. I have an unrelated comment. We, we missed you at Hancer Elementary.
I would second that.
We really do.
I miss, I miss Hampshire Elementary too, but I know that everybody's in great hands with Mrs. Nolan. She's amazing.
We are, and she is. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask. Oh, sorry. System minor.
All right. Roll call, go, please, Ms. Clerk.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stini.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion pass six zero.
Okay, now.
As you said, we appreciate your passing, and I kind of seen. Now, as you said, we appreciate your passing, and I kind of seen. With that, we'll ask for your consideration and ordinance amending the regulations governing maintenance and replacement of sidewalks, modifying the sidewalk reimbursement program. In this case, you might recall that several months ago, we discussed the 3070 match where the village pays 30% and resident pays 70%. And we have not had, we haven't been one of those applications so far this year. So that will be changed to 5050 as well as the mayor has asked us to remove this from village board approval. So the village manager in the future will be able to approve these grants. And as well, we have additional funds available in the program that will be used for sidewalk replacements on a priority basis based on the public works department priorities. So we expect we'll be replacing some sidewalk property in the next couple of months before winter under that, if approved by you.
This is just one of those things that like, I have a hard time where it comes to the village board for sidewalk replacement and that kind of stuff. It seems like regular business of the village. And so I don't, I think it's one more step for somebody that wants to get something done to have to get approval and that kind of thing. We have money in the budget. It's in the budget process. And so I think that, that's my opinion. I just think that it's day to day operations, considering he has a spending limit. I forget what spending authority you have, but I know it's for somebody.
Five thousand, but these tend to be about 1500 to 2000.
Yeah. So for somebody to have to come to a village board for $1,500 expense doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So we could certainly remove that provision if the board feels otherwise, but I don't, I just think it's a waste of everybody's time.
As long as the sidewalks are in pink or green.
Well, we have some color.
Then I'm good with that then.
Since we're on the sidewalk topic.
One second, please.
I do have a question about a specific sidewalk, whether this falls into this concern or not. There's a sidewalk. It's on the western edge of Centennial, almost at Jake Lane where the, the sewer is raised up. I would say, what, a good three inches? So it's, it's a hazard. Is that going to be on those homeowners then to replace that sidewalk and fix that issue? I mean, it's kind of a.
If I could.
Yeah, please.
First of all, this, this motion will act, this ordinance will actually allow us to fix that sidewalk as a village priority.
Okay.
If those residents come to us and ask that it be fixed and offer to fix it, let's say it's not on our high priority list.
Right.
And by the way, we, just discussion at this board level does, does not put that on the public works priority list. We have to be very careful about liability. And that's the one thing we had this with Attorney Schuster's advice. We believe that we can maintain a list of public works as long as it's a shortlist. We acknowledge that there's a problem. In fact, in some cases, we'll go out and spray paint, pink or pink is the appropriate color, I think. So there's one. And that's, that's, I've been doing that. I've seen that myself. If it's less than two inches, we grind them down. We talked about that before. If it's anything more than two inches, then it has to be repaired or replaced. But in that, in that particular case, I'll make Dave aware of it and he'll take a look at it and see if it falls on our high priority.
Thank you. Yeah. Cause that one, that's been brought to my attention quite a bit that.
This is the first year we've actually says, I thought this is money for that priority, the public works priority list in addition to the sidewalk.
Great.
I guess that would be my question since this now allows that motion is how, how are, how is the eighth portion of sidewalk determined as high priority or not?
That's something that we leave to the public works department and for liability purposes. That's all I would prefer to say. If we acknowledge that we have a sidewalk that requires replacement and we don't replace it, then we have a potential liability.
So if we acknowledge a sidewalk needs replacement, would it be who of us now that we're passing this to them just replace that?
If we had the funds to replace all of them, yes, but probably don't.
And so that's why they, they maintain a list at the, at the public works of where priorities are problematic areas within, problem areas within the village and if funds are available, they go and they replace it. This would allow them to have a little more flexibility in, in that they've had money. This is the first year we've had money in the budget for sidewalk replacement, but we've also always reserved money for the 5050 program. And a lot of people don't, well, not 5050, 7030, we're changing it to 5050. Make it easier for the resident now to come to the village, you know, because it's less of an expense out of their pocket. Plus it, plus it smoo, that straightens out to pride the whole process flow of it all. And having, okay, well, you have to get, a lot of times people will call in and be, correct me if I'm wrong. People call in and say, how do I, how do I have to get my sidewalk replaced? And then you'll say that it's 7030 and then you'll go, okay, what do I have to do? And then you're like, oh, you have to go in front of the village board.
I understand that. I guess I'm also thinking about, for example, what trustee Robinson was talking about and, and the comment of if the resident wanted to fix that sidewalk that hit this pass, then it would be a 5050 split village. But if that's an area identified as, or meets what we set as criteria as what would be considered a high priority or what a sidewalk, conditions the sidewalk must be in to be even considered for high priority. Then do we still have it on the shoulders of a homeowner that has applied for it? Or would we look at it and say, actually, that's a identified high priority and the village is going to take care of it?
Give you a good example. It's a real example rather than a large. There was a, just this week, it submitted a picture of a, of a sidewalk that needed repair with a ruler showing it appeared to be more than three inches. Dave went out, took a look at it. He agreed it was more than three inches. Didn't ask for a matching program. They just asked to be repaired. Dave has sprayed in it or will be soon and that, that will be on his priority. He made it a priority once he saw it.
Okay. And when it's identified, the spray paint is just to notify the residents that there is a potential hazard, but there is still going to be a fix for something.
Well, it's not just the resident, but anybody who happens to walk.
If they're bad, if they prepare it. I meant residents, plural.
If, if they're bad, they prepare it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Will we, do you anticipate getting a whole lot of people now with one or, one or two squares of sidewalk?
Honestly, I don't really think the matching program will change that much from 7030 to 5050. I think the big thing is that Dave will be able, he'll have somewhere around $20,000 in total for rent. He'll be able to fix a bunch of sidewalks that are high grounds in Old Town.
I guess that'd be part of a question too of the liability of the developer. If a community isn't that old, like I understand areas of our community, some date back to the 1800s, some, a lot of development in the 50s. A lot of the older, older sections of town may not have a site, right? Some of the new developments off of Centennial behind or over near Dorothy Schmidt Park, even in some of the newer coming developments, there are times that a sidewalk can shift. How are we holding developers liable that are putting these in and if, or do we even look and say a sidewalk should not shift, sink or move for X amount of time? Anything under that or, or that does not meet what would be a general standard nationally, right? For, for our area. There could be some developer liability. If there is no proven misuse or some, you know what I mean? How, how are we looking at those types of situations? Cause I understand an old town being 70 years old, some of the sidewalks being very old. But I also take walks through newer developments. There are some sidewalks that have very large gap.
As you know, we take public improvements on every development. And toward the end of development, when it's finished, in fact, we still haven't accepted the public improvements yet because they haven't submitted all the required information. So once we accept the public improvements and we turn their bond, then they've been released from that. There's no warranty period beyond the, once we accept public improvements.
Cause he online.
Uh, yes, Tim Paulson is up there.
You may know the answer to this, but just a question to you. What is the expected lifespan of a sidewalk in a, in a community, in a residential community development?
You know, I would say, you know, 20, 30 years, but you know, there's going to be things that happen, you know, with soils or maybe it's over, you know, a trench or something. There's settlement or there's a water main break, you know, so things happen. But to Jay's point, you know, once we accept the developments, then they do go to an additional one-year maintenance period before final acceptance. So that, that is the process with developments. So you know, the improvements are in, approved, accepted, and then there's a additional one-year maintenance period.
And that, that's like, as an example, a subdivision that can take seven years to be completed. You've got seven years to have your sidewalks in good shape, plus that one-year maintenance period. So we only accept the public improvements when the subdivision is completely built out. So you think, with the way things have been going anyway, like as an example, subdivision I lived in was built, like started to be built in like 94, 95 and didn't finish till after 2008 or so. And so the village accepted the public improvements in 2008 and they had to go through and make sure the sidewalks were all good in that period of time. And if they weren't, the village would have had it replaced because we wouldn't have accepted. So I would think that like for a development, is like a residential development, you'd have a pretty substantial period of time to get something like that resolved. Am I, am I correct in that, Mr. Paulson?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Not if a subdivision is completed in a year, you know, we have some like smaller, like industrial developments where they do.
I don't think any development is done in a year, but even at an Oaks that, that could be 20 years to develop. Last two years of that or whatever the final areas are, they're not pulling, they're not pouring all of the community sidewalk at the beginning of the 20.
No, I, I agree with that.
We're doing, we're doing zone by zone. So some of the areas, I agree, would be older and you could say, hey, it's been around for 10 years. Some of them have been there for a year.
I agree with that.
When the board approves, return the bond after one year, warranty's old.
Right.
You know, I think that, you know, the warranty is for, you know, proven defects in workmanship or materials. And a lot of those things are going to show up in the year. If it was a bad concrete mix, you know, it starts spalling the first winter. You know, you'll see a lot of these things that are definitely covered by the warranty for workmanship or, you know, poor materials show up within the, within the timeframes of our maintenance period.
Yeah. And I'm not, I'm not saying any developer isn't doing a good job with the sidewalks. I'm just curious if the lifespan of the sidewalk is 20 to 30 years and we have a year post development. Now it's on the village to have that. It could be something that knowing that, that in the budget committee is, is next year when you're considering sidewalks. And now if this were to pass, it's 25, the right number, does that need to be up? What does that look like based on public works? Assessment based on all the development happening. We know we've got that for a year. Maybe that's, it's just something to keep in consideration. I didn't understand, I didn't know the lifespan of the sidewalk. So that was part.
Any other questions or concerns? Entertain a motion, motion amending or ordinance number 22, 20 dash 21, or it's amending the regulations for governing and maintenance of replacement of sidewalks. Second. Comments, concerns? Ms. Clark, can you roll the roll, please?
Ms. Paul Stiney.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson. Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Motion pass six zero.
Thank you. Now we'd like to ask your consideration for an ordinance amending the zoning requirement, excuse me, an ordinance amending the village liquor regulations to create a new liquor license in the C3 category.
Now, this is just creating the license so that it can go through the liquor commission. So as you know, we don't keep any licenses open. We've never done that. And so we've got a new establishment coming into the village that wants to have a liquor license. And so in order for the liquor commission to be, to even discuss whether or not they should have or shouldn't have a liquor license, we would have to create one first. So it's a little bit backwards of a process, but we don't have a set number of licenses. So this would just be creating a license. We're not awarding it to anyone that has to go through the. So anyone have any questions about that?
Can I ask why we don't have a set number of licenses? Does anybody know?
We just never had a set license?
Yeah, it'll be adjusted all the time as, as more and more businesses move into town. We'll have to keep creating liquor licenses if, if those establishments serve alcohol.
Variation.
You know, we could, we could say, look, no more period. And then if a restaurant wanted to open or another, you know, establishment wanted to open, we could just, we'd have a hard number. But that would only last as long as any given board that felt that way, you know? So it's just not something that we've done. Some other towns do it that way where they only have so many, but it's typically more developed towns that, that have their set number of licenses. I could imagine that maybe someday we would get there, like, you know, because we wouldn't want to have a bar on every, you know, every single street in the village.
That's what I was getting at.
You know, but I mean, I don't.
I don't know. They do in Wisconsin.
Just a question. This is the only license I've allowed. That's why it's listed as restaurants. I didn't think they were a full restaurant. That's why I wasn't sure.
So I think this is, I don't know, we should just, or you should know the difference between all the classes, but this is for the outdoor.
Some of the categories, we do have available licenses. It's important that it's voted every time. Just in this category.
We've just not had that establishment like this, other than the ones that.
Yeah.
Just one more question then. Is, is this, because it's a matter of course at this point, this decision didn't come from the liquor commission. It's coming from the village that we want to add one more?
Right.
Okay.
So in order for us to talk about awarding a license, a license has to be available to pass.
So the village is doing that.
We do have an application for that.
What you're asking is the, the board has the authority to create or determine or, or cap off how many liquor licenses there'll be. But as to the issuance of any particular license that becomes available, the liquor commission reviews the application and, and can approve then the issuance of that license if it exists. So it's a two-handed process.
So the commission doesn't need first to decide we'd like to have it.
They could, they could, but that is not what the liquor commissioner is reporting to you tonight.
That's what I just want to clarify.
It seems like it's to, to say, okay, fine. We'd give you one if we had one and then say, hey, guys, could we create one? And then we'd have to have them back. It's okay. We're going to give you one. It seems like this is just an easier process.
Two of us peeked into Hampshire social just this past week and it didn't seem like it was ready to get a liquor license. That's why when I saw this, I went, oh.
They're not planning to open until January. They're just trying to get some of this behind them. I think this also has to be approved for the. And they of course have to pay the fee.
Yes.
For the license, what issue if it all, when it all comes around.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions, Tom's concerns? I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 22 dash 22 and an ordinance amending the village liquor regulations to create a new liquor license in the C3 category. Questions, comments? Ms. Burke, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Fodor.
Aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Stiney. Motion pass six zero.
The next item on the agenda appears on page 32 of your packet. Would ask for your consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning requirement for wall signs in the interchange overlay district. You'll recall that in the past, we had an ordinance increasing the height of the signs to try and accommodate the variances that we've been issuing. This board, as well as the planning and zoning commission suggested that we do something similar for wall signs. So there's an agenda supplement for you and also finds back from planning and zoning commission. Chairman Rock is available for questions.
Do you guys remember the last time there'd be a grant of variance, we were kind of, of the thought process, we'd already done this, but then realized it's just for the big set of tall signs. So this kind of just matches what we did over there and what we wanted done at the staff level. So.
I thought we talked about it and voted that whatever they want to put on the side of their building, we didn't care.
Well, in order, in order, in order for that to even be remotely, we still need to amend the ordinance.
That was just for the one variance that came to us. Where are they like, where are we voting on?
Yeah. Yeah. This is, this is so that we don't have any more of those coming to us anyway, because they're just going to ask for it to begin with.
Instead, there won't be any more. So we might exceed these, these guidelines, but these would be, guidelines would be more common.
These, these guidelines are what everybody else is doing anyway, right? And would, if we would have had this in place, we wouldn't have had the need for them to come in for variances in the past.
Variance that we've had before.
Can I ask Chairman Rock, it was passed five to one. Can I ask about the concerns of the vote?
Unfortunately, I don't actually recall the exact detail of the name, but as Jay had just alluded to, this is a bit more updated. Previously, it was one sign was allowed and had to be no larger than this accommodates a lot more of the tenants up there.
Just one question in the ordinance and I'm sure this was modeled off of, off of maybe another ordinance or, or looked at. In the ordinance, it states that there can be one wall sign per retail office or other use in a building. So I'm thinking about, I've got the gas station, let's say, because we're talking about the truck stop right now. So I've got, I've got the gas station. I'm going to have a sign. That's one. I have a fast service restaurant in there. That's two. And I have another business in there. That's three. And I have another business in there, that's three. But then it also says plus one additional. What, what's the one additional if I'm already giving every business in that location a sign?
That came from the planning zoning commission, it's kind of a catch-all in case there's something that we're forgetting, I guess, and we want to come back for variance, a buffer, if you will. For example, the one at Road Ranger, they had a, a seven-seven-seven sign to advertise that they had some slot machines in there, or some gaming machines in there, I guess.
Where I've seen it to where they advertise like McDonald's and then they put another sign on the wall that says drive-through in here.
Or gaming specials that change continually, so one per legal entity was the entire, behind or tenants in that entire building, plus in the games. Uh, one of these apples would have been video gaming here or gaming special.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three and ordinance amending the zoning requirements for wall signs in the interchange overlay district.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Clark, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
This Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
This Pauls, hi, Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
What's your pass six zero?
Thank you. Now on page thirty-six of your packet, we would ask you your consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning regulations for the highway commercial dis, excuse me, HC, highway commercial district regarding automobile truck stops. It turns out that truck stops are not actually a permitted use within the village of Hampshire. And uh, so Josh discovered that in our research looking at new truck stops requests and uh what zoning classification they should ask for and we determined that they're not permitted any of ours on the classification, so rest of you may make them permitted use slightly late. Josh, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just, so they're, so they're currently listed as a special use, but none of them have ever gotten an actual special use approval. And what you can kind of see in the current list of permitted uses for that district is that it allows restaurants, gas stations, uh, and all these things that truck stops have. It's just they're together instead of separate. So in effect, you are allowing truck stops, just not calling it that. So this is kind of a cleanup to clear up some confusion that we had with loves and, and, you know, potentially the orders coming along. Um, and it also additionally just kind of better defines what a truck stop is, adds a definition in the code, what an auto slash truck stop is um to include things like the amenities that they tend to have, such as car, you know, truck washes that are there and uh retail establishments for selling accessories for vehicles and parts and things like that. So that was model of these ordinance, by the way, in case you're curious, um, but the planning zoning commission voted six to zero to recommend it and I think she got it right.
Uh, just one question specifically to the truck wash. I think for any other I shouldn't say any, but to my knowledge, we don't restrict business types in zones outside of specific potential hazardous that require special maybe state licenses, like when we were talking about cannabis shops or we talked about other types of businesses. Why are we specifically excluding somebody from being able to open independent truck wash in a in a now truck stop automobile zone?
So we already do, they have to get, we, we do prohibit certain types of, the purpose of the zoning districts is to limit the types of business uses that are in that area. So truck wash, you know, a vehicle wash currently, you'd have to get a special use if all you want to do on a piece of property up there is put a vehicle wash. You have to get a special use for that, both through planning and zoning, village board approval. What we wanted to avoid is, is wrapping that up into this because you, um, if you were to make it a permitted use, they wouldn't have to ask and then developers can come in and take really prime real estate for, for commercial businesses and make it a truck wash, so. Um, it's not changing anything, it's actually just keeping it exactly how it is uh to that, to that particular question.
So the difference though, as I read it, is some businesses, because it's considered an amenity of that business, sure, you don't need a special permit. But if you want to do a standalone, now you need a special permit. I don't understand the difference between the two, other than we're just letting somebody add something. But you can't do it as your own if that's still the business you want.
Primarily would be due to property sales tax. A truck stop generates a lot of sales tax compared to a truck wash and so that property that they're taking up, they might have that as an amenity in addition to the other revenue generators that they're using on that prime piece of property. That's the, that's the intent behind it anyway.
We, we would like to have the planning zoning commission have the village board approve a single use like that. That can be an accessory used to, even an industrial, can be an accessory used to, to a trucking facility. But they can't just build a standalone truck system. Excuse me, truck wash.
So if Love wants to add one, it's fine, but Blue Beacon, who's also a multinational, multi, like a national chain of truck washes, but Blue Beacon decided that they wanted to come into the village, they need to come and get a special use.
If that's the only thing they want to do on the property.
Well, that's the only thing that they do do on any other.
Do we have the water and our pumping stations equipped to handle that?
Yes, we'll be better equipped now with the one mile dimensions.
Just, just as an addition to that, whenever there's a new commercial structure, he had those mention their view of that structure, so if at that time, if we ever came to a point where capacity was a question or even the sewage that it generates and the service system was a question, he, I would have the review letter on that. And I guess.
This will be the last thing I say on this one. Just so that I'm, it's clear. My concern is that saying some businesses aren't allowed and some are allowed, I understand for a variety of reasons that different districts may or may not allow a certain type of business. My concern is that we're saying some businesses can do this and others cannot based on whether it's all you want to do or not all you want to do. That's my concern. This, not that the, the regulation of what type of businesses can go into a space, it's more of the picking and choosing who can do that type of business.
So that, that's entirely up to this board. If you would prefer to have truck washes as a single permitted use that could easily be sale.
I'm just speaking my opinion and sharing. I didn't want it to come off that I'm against the village saying we shouldn't allow certain businesses in certain areas or not. That wasn't it. It's that we're specifically saying some businesses can independent, whatever the company is, if you mentioned, we can, Beacon wouldn't be able to do something like that. That's my, that's my only concern.
Well, and again, it's not that they wouldn't be allowed to, it's that they would need the village to approve it.
Which means they have to pay for a zoning.
Right, right.
Through grants.
Well, just a special use for a business like that, it's not. And, and this is just as speculated what we believe, what we believe this board, by any zoning, we should like to do. There are other certain, other particular uses that we feel similarly, for example, truck parking lots. That, that part, current zoning is very restricted. Just parking lots. So um if somebody just wants to come down, build a private parking lot, we don't think that's what this board and the planning zoning commission would like to see, so we make that a little more difficult. But, but we are treating everybody equally in the sense that if, if you're five companies that just build truck stops and truck washes, then all five of those companies, not just Blue Earth.
Correct, understood.
So we're not picking and choosing within the companies, just categories.
Yes, and, and.
To the extent that corporations have institutional rights.
Yes, no, and I completely understand, we're not saying one business versus another and limiting by a business, it's it's the type of use that it's accessory versus.
What does a variance process like that cost? Apply for special use and all that?
Especially use is, or Larry's going to tell me if I'm wrong, I think, but especially use is um five hundred dollars plus uh hundred dollars per acre of the property. So I think that's what it is.
I can look it up. I think so, all, so all in typically, so like if you needed like you know, they have like a five acre site or something of that nature, you're talking a thousand bucks.
A few thousand.
Right, right. So it's not that owners to, property owner, that kind of thing.
I just have one clarification, because I understand then that um that we're not recommending the truck vehicle washes as a permitted use by themselves, but it'd be considered, it could be considered as an amenity of another one.
Or, or as a special use standalone.
Okay, this, this, nowhere in the automobile truck stop section mentions truck wash.
Does, the definition does. Uh, it says automobile truck laundries.
Yeah, that's. That is the zoning term.
It is the term, that's what I'm like, I thought laundries, wash, if that, but it, that does include it.
Well, that's what that is intended to mean.
Laundries.
I agree, it's a little archaic, over there.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss something before we, yes. Okay. Make it a laundry.
Okay, uh, how, how are we feeling with the special use? Yes? It will be nice. Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four. So, okay, great. Mr. Clark, can you call the roll?
Mr. Pauls, hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Oh.
Miss Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Bye, bye, it's morning.
Okay, monthly report time. We have the finance report, the engineering report. Mr. Paulson is online and Ms. Lori Lyons is right here as well, eagerly waiting. Any questions that you may have for either of the reports?
Can I just throw out page forty-three?
Absolutely.
Pension trust fund, um, the concern of revenue being at seven percent expenditure season seven. So seven percent solely because the village has not made their contribution to the police pension fund. Um, we wait until we receive all of the property tax uh collections and then we make the lump sum contribution, which is in excess of five hundred thousand dollars, so it'll zoom right up there.
It'll zoom, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for the reports, they look great. It's good to see all the numbers and uh good work with the engineering report, Mr. Paulson. Next, we have the regular accounts payable to personnel in a gigantic amount of eighty dollars. Do we have any questions about what it's about? I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable to personnel in the amount of eighty dollars. So questions, comments, concerns? Call the roll.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
This Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Pauls, hi, Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Next, we have the minuscule amount of five hundred and eight thousand. Mr. Pauls, three.
No questions.
Ma. Just a few dollars, three minutes, just a few dollars, you're getting over. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? I will entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable. Question, comments, concerns? Mr. Clark, call the roll.
This Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
This Pauls, hi, Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Motion pass zero.
Pass zero? Mr. Mayor Kelly?
Mr. Re, for the record, I'm sorry, the potential recall. Um, what was the amount of the uh
Five hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Thank you, I just wanted to know.
I don't do that, but I'm going to do it now. Mr. Kelly? Business Development.
Sure. There could be many things. Uh, Business Development Commission met last night. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Fizalado for his wonderful notes and getting them out so quickly. I was unable to attend, but I can report on what he did. Uh, Mr. Ray did discuss all of the landscaping. You probably saw the beautiful landscaping going down through streetscape. Fantastic, great job. That, um, and that we've also received the LEDs to update the clock.
So they're in the clock.
They are in the clock, yes.
Does it, does it still time yet?
The remaining element uh is still on order. Uh, and so, uh, as are the new streetlights as well, so they are still on order as well.
If I could add to that, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, please.
The uh, streetlights either shipped on September thirteenth or they didn't, and they did. So now they're expected to ship in October. We won't know until they ship and once they ship, then we can report that they have shipped.
Good news is the ones that we have still working.
Yes, other good news is the bolts and the bases are all in, I'll just hold on for the middle drop, it'll be a very quick process.
Can we, just as a request, maybe, see about putting that on um the village's social media pages? Just to say, you know, the update with a picture, because, you know, I heard about the stuff going in the plants and there was no photo, but it was a person that was thrilled, so of course I liked it. Um, but, and went by it myself, but I thought maybe just something from the village, you know, just a post saying, you know, with a picture of it.
Someone gets the uh, the official poster of the village a nice photo.
Okay.
In, in nudge, nudge board.
Is landscaping completed?
It is.
As of this afternoon, it was.
Right.
And then, and then maybe that little update done too, when, when the things are coming in, so.
So if somebody could be nice enough to take a nice photo tomorrow, maybe, if you guys drive through, finally got plans for the morning?
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, thank you. We'll get it handled.
And the only, the only thing to add to that update would be that we expect the lights and the poles in October and the clock uh addition parts also by day.
Yeah.
But the good news is that clock's also right twice a day.
Yes. And it's on twenty-four hours surveillance, but if we have any problems, the least it will be spared.
Chief Pan's wife looked like she was really into photography.
He has a really nice, you know what? He, he just started here, we asked his wife to just take some apples.
Wish I'd have come here today.
That's what I'm saying, I have to be a Texas.
That's okay. Anything else on streetscape, Mr. Rogers?
I think that's it.
Okay. Uh, there was also a beautification, a committee report by Commissioner Swalwell. Blocks, the painting is done, the rest of the update is currently in progress. Uh, the Rose Garden, there's questions as to when the project will start uh or begin due to contractor availability, so I don't see it working.
I'm sorry, it began. I had a note taken this morning. Uh, I spoke to the owner, he said his contractor expects to begin in forty-six weeks and another project now. Uh, but he's actually sticking with the original contractor as provided, you can see him goes, he's gone back to that contractor now. Um, so we don't expect, but in the meantime, the restaurateur is the owner, so by the way, this came up on Facebook as well. Uh, Berry Garden. Same owner as the Berry Garden in Hinsdale and um healthy up north. West of, anyway, another community way of north uh by Libertyville. And uh, so this is the same brand, same, same ownership, so there've been a lot of people mentioning that, yeah, I own a restaurant like that in Hinsdale. And so I think this will be very popular and I decided not to jump in today, but it will be a Mexican restaurant, Mexican food. Uh, both owners are Mexican, so we're not incorporating anybody's food culture. Um, and uh, they're, they're already doing some preliminary work inside, they haven't fully furnished yet, but we expect the interior to be completed and probably open before the construction on the exterior is done.
So Hinsdale and Vernon Hills.
Vernon Hills, that's what it is.
Um, all right, the cave facade uh is in progress. And then Hampshire, Hampshire Social, the exterior work is near complete, the interior work is in progress and anticipated grand opening expected near Christmas time. There was also discussion around the long-term strategy that continued as well. And then there's the schedule for Hampshire Berry Own articles that will be coming out, so the, the articles that are written by Miss Jane here. Uh, Chicken Dip will be the next business and then there will be one for BBC Beautification to talk about what they do. RK Services, then Kruger Accounting, that is the current schedule. Uh, and new business, there's a new commercial business in town. Uh, the new commercial businesses include Harps Lounge, which just had its grand opening and its ribbon cutting, so thanks to everyone who was able to attend that. Hampshire, Hampshire Social, that'll be coming, Garden Berry and then Alfonso's. And Alfonso's is the Italian restaurant or pizza place that's opening over near the pharmacy in the building just adjacent to the pharmacy. Do we know when they're going to open?
He's very anxious to get open, he's paying rent, so I would say he'll probably be open by little by two. Wonderful. He's able to permit, he has proof.
Yes.
Primal to do the work.
Yep, so another local establishment to uh to frequent for all those looking for an, an additional choice of times.
Is that, is that a sit-down or is it just like a takeout or?
I don't know yet.
It will have two tabletops, uh, very small seating, only seating for four or six people, I think. And uh, so yeah, it'll be primarily carryout.
And it's in the building?
And they've already made an arrangement with uh Hampshire Social to provide a pizza to that.
Nice. Is it in the same building as the pharmacy or?
It's in the building.
So the pharmacy building.
Where's the COVID situation?
It's that one, with a COVID site, yes.
Yeah, it's in, it used to be a shake, shake shop.
No, the shake's playing.
Yes.
Okay.
The last two on, on new developments, Ron Key and Seventy-two Route, there's a tenant that's, uh, the tenant, one tenant is planning to close on sixteen acres of the property. Uh, the owner is looking to develop the land this fall or next spring, so that sounds like it's very closely finalized. And then uh, in the logistics park update that you have, you've, you've had some presentations around Vista and Freight Union are currently being developed and the village has received an inquiry from a global logistics facility for up to a twenty acre parcel of land. Any other new development or businesses that?
Along with all that good news, I would say that we have officially been um notified that we are no longer a tender for Project Yukon. Which is a one point five million square feet.
That's one, one development area. That's one, went to Belvedere?
Uh, probably Rockford, we believe, although it's not been officially announced yet. It could be Belvedere, probably, we believe, probably Rockford. Uh, I would like to say that we have two, one current uh, landlord within the village. Chuck uh, Van Blissigen, uh, Chuck uh, Lightiger, Lightiger, who, who was very helpful. There's, most of you know, that's, he has the five hundred acres that's uh, bisected by uh, uh, Barville North. And uh, but he, and that's really a Class A office is what they built up in Bannock Burn in the North Shore. Uh, but he, he did allow us to put that project, put that site into the project, and he spent quite a bit of money engineering uh, to give them, and we really thought it had, had a really good shot at it. Also, Dan Light, who owns Charlotte property, a hundred and sixty acres behind El July, he worked really hard for his project uh, to put his, his site forward for the same project. Um, at the end of the, at the end of the day, we really believe that it wasn't the site so much as it may have been the location. We think that maybe this particular distribution center is maybe serving Rockford um, to Madison rather than Rockford to Chicago. Um, this is, it's a large regional distribution center by a large retailer, we believe, although we've never, it's never really been confirmed who it was. Uh, but that project really allowed us to organize three big parcels of land. And Dan Light and his broker were in here just last week, and they planned to now annex into the village so that they can be better annexed and zoned, so that they can be better prepared for the next project that comes along. Which is really good. We'll, we'll have now three very large sites. Um, Chuck was able to put, he was able to show them where, how they can put two million square feet on his land. And I don't think anybody at, while it's old, but last week, there's not another site like that between Rockford and Chicago anywhere where you can put two million square feet on a single piece of property. Pretty much near that cost range. So I think this has really helped our development going forward, as long as the logistics stays busy as it has, I think we have to build prime property out there. In addition to the logistics department. Thank you.
Any questions for BDC?
Trustee Fodor, you get to follow that.
Alright, we spent some time. She wasn't paying attention to you.
She was so excited about her, or she looked up.
I did, as I was following about you.
Is everybody scared of you on that?
No. No, unless you got to. Okay, so um, we met last Thursday, we discussed um, new things that would be going into the next newsletter, but we also got to see um, a preview of the new communication the village has decided to adopt. What's a good word for it?
Roll, uh, yeah, roll out.
Roll out, thank you. That's good work. Um, so we're looking forward to when that gets to the line. Um, we were able to name for it. Sounds pretty cool. Um, and do you want to tell them anything about the app yet, or?
It's just as a part of the title migration that we talked about before, they have an app called My Civic or a platform called My Civic, and the My Hampshire app will be its own independent app that you would download on the App Store, and it's gonna have village information and village calendar on it, and push out push notifications to people, and so there's a lot of opportunity there.
Well, then there's another neat feature that they're not talking about, but like if you have a ordinance complaint or a street light out, or like your street happens to be flooding or something of that nature, you could send in an inquiry uses a GPS location on your telephone that to, to put in the location, and then staff will get a notification, hopefully leaving, alleviating the need for somebody to go to Facebook and ask, how, how do I complain about this?
Precisely. Yes, that was a very interesting feature, and we kind of liked that. Um, and we had also talked about uh, looking for photographs from around town that we can potentially feature on the app, so. We have a lot of really talented photographers in town, and even some really talented amateurs, so you get a really good photo. If you're looking for information on how to share that with us.
It's nice to see you, you're a problem.
Too much underwear. That's all.
Public works. Your report. You guys did a great job with all the rain. Holy moment.
I, I do have a question for you, Trustee Cole. The detention, right now I'm calling it detention, where they're doing the construction of Seventy-two because they have it blocked like it's supposed to. Would you say it's working as it's supposed to?
The detention on Seventy-two that they're blocking.
So where the creek goes, where they're doing all the construction.
Box.
They have it set up so that it does.
They can build that a mile wide. The problem is, you're trying to take all that water and jam it down a creek that's dilapidated with down trees, that beavers, probably a lot of garbage in it, so, no. It'll work, it'll work better than what was there.
Okay.
But until it gets fixed downstream, uh, no.
So there's still work that needs to be done on the creek?
Well, they need to follow the creek all the way down.
Right, that's what I mean, not just through town here, but through fields and all the way down. Uh, I, I don't believe Seventy-two flooded as bad as it hasn't passed.
No. It didn't flood at all. It would have been, it would have been four or five inches underwater.
Right.
It was at the top of that basin.
Right, but that's what I didn't know, it didn't flood over. So in that case, it did, but to your.
And, and the village has cleaned out off of Dwellerger, um, on the north side. Uh, they've cleared out a lot of the trees on village property, but there's still a ton of debris that just slows water down.
Now, what, if I could just add to that, the culvert is not anywhere near capacity yet. It's not completed yet. Um, in fact, there was a, a design error by I.D.A. engineers that is now being corrected, because about twelve inches of the base of that culvert in Seventy-two and State Street is standing water, even when it should be dry. And so that, that's capacity that's being consumed. In addition to that, they've been, you may have seen on Facebook as well, that there were, there were pumps that were pumping water through the culvert as they're trying to keep the creek on the south side of Seventy-two dry, so they could work over it. So the culvert is, it, it didn't work, and uh, and I believe we had about three inches of rain that night really fast, I think it was Sunday. Um, and uh, and that, it, the culvert got near the top, but it didn't top over top at all. So I would say the culvert is working to the extent that it relieved the intersection.
Yeah, it should, as of right now in the state.
Yes, and once they, once they take those pumps out and correct the air and engineering, then I think it'll have a lot more capacity in the next.
And that was my understanding, but thank you for, for stating that, and then also, Trustee Cole, for the down. I mean, maybe that's the second phase we look at for next year is how do we fix areas, but I know some of that gets into the township, county, state, state, and it's not like creek area we can fix.
Comment, even though we have some of the right of ways on the creek over there.
Where the creek goes on the process, where we have control and we can do things, we have.
We, yep.
And I.D.A.'s correcting whatever need to be corrected for the standing water.
And to, and to be honest, you look at any farm field, there's creeks that run through all these farm fields all over, all over every county. There's down trees, there's debris in them, and the creeks are always full, and when they, when they uh, reach capacity, because they can't flow like they should, they flood the fields.
The next thing I'm hearing about that is once that culvert is completely open, construction's finished, creek beyond that. Uh, there's a very small culvert at Duchess, it's really small, so it's designed so that uh, the water will over top Duchess, so we'll be hearing about, we heard about that before during big rains. And even with this culvert, that'll stay there, because the culvert up on Duchess isn't, it doesn't have anywhere near the same. And it's just a cute on the yard.
Any other questions? New business or other announcements? Oh, sorry, I did skip by there. I'm sorry, here's another page. Do you need, do you need to add to the question?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
Hope you're long.
Okay, uh, new business or other announcements?
Uh, I just want to thank Mr. Edges for taking care of the car parking situation. Uh, I know it happened two weekends in a row, so to know it's not going to happen again is a really good thing, because while I understand the aesthetics of it, it did.
We thought the first weekend was kind of a one-off deal because of Labor Day, it turned out not to be, and it will not be again. This department is. Thank you.
Okay, with that, uh, we don't have executive session tonight. Uh, I would like to entertain a motion to. The clerk, I'm not even gonna ask.
Ms. Fodor.
Uh, eight.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Paulsini, hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion pass zero.
Thank you all, thank you all. Thank you all, thank you all.